Ryan, can you hear?
Yep, now I can.
Okay, just wanted to make sure he was on. Kristen is on as well. Okay. All right, I'm gonna get started. My name is Tony Frankelangia and this is the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals for May 28th. We have four members on the board right now and that is enough for a quorum to vote on any matters at hand. Sometimes, depending on the situation, we require a vote of four to approve a to approve a variance application for motor vehicle, I think. A majority. Yeah, well, one of them is four. I forgot which one it was. The variance is four. We have five people usually on the board. We only have four, so if anybody wants to withdraw, if somebody doesn't show up, you know, you're welcome to do that, but we need, you know, we need to get four people voting in favor of the variance if there's a variance. Majority on motor vehicles is just, you know, three out of four is fine, but for other variances, it's four votes in favor of the variance to approve it. If one person votes against it, then the thing is kind of shut down. So I'm just, you know, kind of like giving you the heads up on that. If we only have four people here and your application is a little bit iffy, you may want to postpone until we have five, but I'm just throwing that out for, you know, consideration. Anyway, what we're gonna do is basically we'll go into new business and we hear the applications in the order that they're received and, you know, you'll have a chance to come up, state your business, talk about your application, present the hardship. And then, once you present that, there'll be a question and answer session with the board members. We have a remote member as well. But the question and answer session, just to get more clarification on the application at hand, and once the question and answer session is completed, we'll make a motion to close the hearing on the application. And then when we go into old business, what we'll do is vote on the applications that we heard during the new business portion of the meeting. Now, it's important to, if you have to provide any information, that you provided during the new business portion of the meeting, because when we go into old business, we can't accept any new information. So, I mean, that's an important thing. So if you have something to say, say it during the application part, you know, the questioning part, during the new business portion of the meeting. Any questions with regards to that? If not, I'll go ahead and get started. And I, oh yeah, we have one more. Okay, we're, we're good. We got five people. Just in time. Okay, our first application is ZBA 2024-04 and 2024-05, 979 Deming Road, map 5-2, block 122, lot 6. Eric Peterson, Cold Spring Brook Farm Incorporated is requesting variances for one, a front yard setback of 5.9 feet for the expansion of a non-conforming greenhouse structure, and two, a side yard setback of 7.8 feet for the expansion of a non-conforming greenhouse structure where the front yard setback of 35.5 feet and a side yard setback of 25 feet is allowed per Berlin zoning regulation 11C2 in an OT zone. Speaking for the application. Microphone is rare for you.
Eric Peterson.
Go ahead, Tom, for yours.
So, well, maybe I should begin. I don't want to waste time, but in light of what you said initially, maybe, I don't know if it's better to wait for, is there usually a full board or is this?
Oh, we got five. We got one, two, three, four, and five on the, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so.
Yeah.
So, our project is a project that's already finished and apparently performed it somewhat egregiously, but what we did is we had, we have a farm stand and, and on Deming Road, it's been there for a very long time and we had a old greenhouse structure that was coming off of the farm stand that had been there for longer than I've been there. And the structure was falling down. It was in disrepair and no longer usable, so we rebuilt it. A much more solid structure, but it's, it's bigger by, it's probably a foot closer to the road and a foot going towards what's considered the side yard, which is different deed, but it is actually also owned by the farm. So that's what we're requesting a variance for.
You say it's already done?
It's done, yeah.
You get a permit for it or anything?
No. So the building department happened to come upon them while they were building it. And they called me out afterwards. We came to them, told them you need permits and you need a variance for it. I'm gonna put the pictures up now of how it looked when I went there. Sorry, I did bring a picture of the old. I don't think that I submitted that with the application. I had that one up. Want to see that? Quick, first, the old one or a new one?
You can bring both up, if you want.
That was the old structure here. Oh, well, you can see it, but pretty much portion right here. You done? From the interior? Deming Road is behind here. I'll have the other photos.
What kind of hardship is involved in this application? Most of our applications require, you know, a statement of a hardship. So what's your statement of your hardship?
I guess the hardship is that we're working from a, a pre-existing structure that was not in conformance with, is the current zoning rules. But we were, we were really not trying to go too much beyond the scope of what, what we had always had there pre-existing. We were just trying to make it look a little bit nicer than it, it used to be.
And you added a couple of feet to it?
Yeah, we brought, I think it's, you know, we don't have, we didn't even measure the old one, but it's about a foot further out than a foot wide, or a foot longer and a foot going towards the road.
Okay.
Does that foot come does that foot come in closer to the road affect your traffic going in and out?
Not at all, no.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yes, Mr. Peterson, you chuckled at yourself by saying perhaps egregiously you began this project without the permit, but is there any more that you'd like to add to why you wouldn't have reached out first before engaging?
Yeah, it was, it was just, it was, you know, ignorance and that, that farm, I mean, I don't know our entire history of what we've gotten permits for and what we haven't, but it's, it's just a very old farm. Greenhouses have come and gone. Things have gone up and come down. You know, it's been there for, it's 110 years old and there's just been very many, many changes over the years. And really, off the top of my head, the only thing that we ever sought permitting for, and this was through hiring a contractor, was when we put some gas burning furnaces in some of our greenhouses. But in terms of building greenhouses, taking them up, taking them down, amending them, repairing them, we were acting under, you know, the way it had always been done, I guess, you know, so. And until the inspectors came out, I, I had no idea that we were in error whatsoever. We were just trying to replace some old greenhouse that had been there for 40 years.
Did you pour, are these new pads?
Yeah, we did pour the pads for him, yes. It used to be stone and really the pad is just to kind of facilitate people being able to walk on it. You know, the stones are are not, you know, it's a, it's a customer area. It's a place where people are shopping. It used to just, that was just, this was just rock, stone. Yes. Underneath a similar structure that was a little smaller, yeah.
Yeah, and we brought the pad out this way, but there's no, what you're saying here, there's no, there's no building over this section.
A photo of, of it now. And then the pad, it sticks out a little bit further than the actual structure.
Yeah.
I just think the big pause is, you know, retroactively coming out things is very frustrating for the board, you know, and it's, it's, I mean, when you visually look at this, it's handsome. It looks good. It's, it's not obviously bigger than it was. We're talking a matter of inches here, so it's it's just, it's just, we.
I do have one more, I mean, this is just one more picture of the old one. I don't know if that one that we were showing, but this is. Yeah, okay. So that one there is probably, that's probably 15 years ago that picture was taken.
Okay. Any more questions? I'll also be asking for comments in favor of the application from the from, well, comments in favor of the application, anybody has any comments in favor of the application or comments in opposition to the application, you're welcome to come up and sign in, speak on it. If there aren't any, I will also ask for staff comments.
I have none at this time.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Can I have a motion to close the application? I have a motion made and seconded to close the application. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's close. Thank you.
Thank you. It's rude time.
Yeah. Next application is ZBA 2024-06, 147 New Britain Road, map 33, block 28, lot 5. There's an app though. Faris Hayek, USA Auto Sales LLC is requesting a determination to allow a change of non-conforming use to allow a used car dealer license at 147 New Britain Road per Berlin zoning regulation 4C3E and a CCD 2 zone, speaking for the application. Counselor, how are you?
Attorney Richard Tentor for the applicant. Seems like this application has generated a fair bit of oh, son? Seems like the application has generated a fair bit of confusion in the, the planning office as to the intent of a, an application that was submitted, I think, in 2019 by my client in order to park some cars in the lot. It's just a, the property is just before the expressway on New Britain Road. I'm sure all been by it many times. Right now, it's a CCD 1 zone. I believe previously it had been general commercial. The site had had a a used car license, used car dealer's license. I have a brief summary that I can pass out, you know, for your consideration. I'll just pass them out now, a minute. Previously, there was a, a used car license on the property under the name of a gentleman by the name of Donald Carlson. I have a copy of that license attached under D and D auto body. And then my client purchased the property in 2019. He originally, he has a license at 218 New Britain Road at a property that he rents. He purchased this property because it had an license and was intending to move his, his used car license into this property. Due to COVID and other factors and a business slowdown, he didn't get around to doing that until this year and he went into the office at the planning department. And there was some confusion as to whether he has what he needs to apply for a used car dealer's license. Basically, the used car dealer's license use was a, was a non-conforming use that had never been abandoned. The only reason my client bought that property was because it had the, it had a previous used car license on it. And he's primarily in the business of selling used cars, wholesaling, not really for repairs, but he does need the used car license in order to be able to perform his business. In 2019, I know there was an application before the, before the board. I wasn't involved, but it had to do with the ability to park cars and there was a site plan. At the time, I believe that had a lot to do with, he had a lot of cleanup to do when he bought the property. It was pretty much a mess. There was trailers full of old car parts. There were abandoned vehicles and then there was an abandoned building. So he showed that site plan in order to stow his overflow of cars from his license on 218 New Britain Road, but he never intended to abandon non-conformity of the use of the used car dealer location at that look, at that location. Non-conforming uses are pretty much are very widely protected. And before I get into that, I'm gonna show you an application that was submitted back in 2019 and see what they again, I wasn't involved in that, but it really didn't say anything about abandoning the non-conformity. Our zoning regulations actually stipulate that if a non-conforming use, and this is Roman numeral four, subsection 3, subparagraph D, if a non-conforming use is superseded by a permitted use, it shall thereafter conform to the requirements of the district in which it is located and the non-conforming use shall not thereafter be resumed. Parking vehicles is really not a permitted use in that zone, so it never really it never really changed to a permitted use. And it was never my client's intention to abandon the non-conforming use. I have some quotes from a treatise by Fuller on planning and zoning, which is pretty much widely recognized in the state of Connecticut. And non-conforming uses are not only protected by our zoning regulations, they're protected by section 8-2 of the statutes. And, you know, case law holds that a non-conforming use is a vested right entitled to constitutional protection. Where a non-conformity exists, it is a vested right which adheres to the land, adheres to the land itself, and the right is not forfeited by a purchaser who acquires it with knowledge of the regulations which are inconsistent with the existing use. My client didn't buy it with that notice. Fuller goes on to say that, and the courts have gone on to say, in deciding whether an activity is a non-conforming use, consider a lot of fucking hearing. No, I know. I gotta save it all up.
Chris, can you mute yourself?
Bellatorian, yes, no, is it just a real?
Really? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and this is on the, the second page of my summary. In deciding whether an activity is a non-conforming use, consideration should be given to three factors. Number one, the extent to which the current use reflects the nature and purpose of the original use, which is basically automobiles. Any differences in the character, nature, and kind of use involved? Well, it's all, has to do with a, a used car license, which is what the previous owner had there. And any substantial difference in the effect upon the neighborhood resulting from the differences in the activities conducted on the property. Well, this property is kind of insulated. You've got the expressway on one side. You've got New Britain Road on one side. Train tracks are in the back and there's another commercial property off to the side. And Fuller goes on to say, even the temporary non-use, I mean, non-conforming use is not a bar to its resumption. So there has to be an intention there and our zoning regulations talk about there has to be a change to a conforming use in order to you know, avoid the protection of the non-conformity there. And that's the only reason my client bought the property is because he thought he could get a license. Fortunately, some years passed. He didn't realize that there was some language, I believe in the minutes of the 2019 meeting that said he was changing the use to car inventory, I believe. But, I don't know, Paulie, was there anything in the discussion that indicated that?
Yeah, so I, I reviewed the audio recording. Pretty much exactly what the minutes state. The applicant had applied at that time for two applications. For one was a request for a change of a non-conforming use for an inventory lot at a used car, for a used car dealer operating at 218 New Britain Road. The second application was for a used car dealer license approval. That's the one that he withdrew at the time because they figured they had the existing license at 218 New Britain Road. They would just use this lot and change the use to another non-conforming use, such as an auxiliary inventory lot for 218 New Britain Road. The confusion there is not that they abandoned anything, they just changed the non-conform use to another one at that time. That's why the application now is to the same thing and change the non-conform use to another non-conforming.
Continue. They thought, I think my client thought he, he, he never intended to give up. I have Ferris Hayek here and maybe he can state it in his own words. Chris, can you just explain to the commission why you bought this property in 2019?
Yeah, the reason I bought it because they have exist license. And someday again, I don't own where, 18 New Britain Road. One day I wanna move to my own location is the reason. And there's some confusion. I didn't understand that back then.
But you never wanted to abandon the right to be able to to get a used car dealer license for that property, is that?
Yes.
The only, the only thing I remember.
Waking, yes. Yes, yes.
Don't you already own both properties?
That's 218.
I rent 218, I don't own it.
It's not in your LLC? Not in your LLC?
After eight, I, I own.
But isn't it under Hayek LLC? Oh, it's not 218 as well? Who's the owner of that? Oh, Nero owns, okay.
His business operator, USA Auto, operates the business there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you own the inventory storage lot across the street. You own that. Your LLC owns 147 New Britain Road.
He owns that, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a big difference.
So what, what goes on in the building? What are you doing in there now?
Office. The whole thing, office for, I do, I may work from there for the dealer. All went inside and saw.
Essentially, we're asking that he be allowed to obtain used car dealers and non-conforming use on 147 New Britain Road property, which is a ten, was a lot to do that. I think there was some confusion. I know there was a lot of discussion about parking vehicles because that site needed a lot of cleanup. I think some buildings came down and it was just kind of a mess and they had to stay out of some weapons in the back. So I think the focus of that hearing was more site plan oriented. We're trying to move his license into there and I think, you know, another good thing is he's, he's kind of buffered, you know, from any kind of other uses.
The only thing I remember is that, the 218 New Britain Road, there was a limit to how many cars could have in the lot and so on and so forth. I mean, I remember we set a limit on that. I don't know if that's in the original minutes.
Yeah, that was for the other applications.
Right. I got you.
And 28, and 218 is both buildings. It's that Cape building in the back and then the white two bay garage structure next to it? Yeah, I'm looking, yeah. Oh, okay, oh.
What used to be a problem is a gas station.
Right.
And then became paralyzed.
So what's gonna happen at 218 if we go forward, moving forward?
So somebody's gonna take over.
Go ahead of somebody else, probably.
What, what, what was the, Paulie, what was the, the parking limit to that spot?
I'm looking into it now, but I think there might have been only four cars, four or six cars they were allowed to have for sale.
Well, okay, but now the 218, the license, license to sell can be transferred to 140.
Oh, no, you can't, you can't transfer a license.
You have to get separate approval.
Right, right, but I mean, basically, basically he's
I'm keeping the same name, but I'm flying.
At 147, right, but now the, the 218, is that still grandfathered in as auto sales?
Yeah, it's still, still that's non-conforming use, no.
There's like
Okay.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I think the main confusion here is, the original application in 2019 was to change in non-conforming use, which is always granted by the board.
Right.
Change from a used dealer to an auxiliary storage lot. I don't think it was ever discussed whether or not you were abandoning that ever. It was just, you changed the use and they got approved for that. Yeah, but they still, the confusion here is you still never eliminated non-conforming use, which is what you were speaking to before, is how that process goes with, you know, state legislation. But changed in non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, so before the board today is, will you allow it to change again with different use to, if you think is less objectionable or same character as inventory storage lot?
By client's use, it's pretty much wholesaling automobile. So basically what you see is what the operation's going to be. That's, that's what his business is. He's been in town for how many years, Ferris?
29 years.
29 years he's been a business in town. He just needed a better location and it's, it's it's difficult to find places.
I, I don't have an issue with the you know, with the, with that. With, you know, 147. My thought, my concern is the fact that you know, 218 is still, you know.
Subject to the same protection of.
Yeah, well, you know, my, my concern is that, my concern is that we have more used car dealers than we have, than we have hamburger joints or pizza places and then down. You know? You know, I mean, it's like, huh? Oh, I know, yeah.
And two eighteen, we're only allowed four spaces for sale. But I, I feel like the board's concern is probably that, with the new occupant there, we might have trouble with them.
Four spaces for sale.
Exactly.
That's quite a bit more.
Quite a bit more, I mean, two eighteen, it wasn't.
You got eighty something.
On, on Google map, there's, I count sixteen cars at two eighteen.
The original one, D and D Auto had about eighty cars, that.
Yeah, well.
Some, um, antique.
Two eighteen's got sixteen cars on it.
I'm looking at Google map, I was just counting.
Before, and there's been an issue.
I was asking, what's that other building?
I don't like the line of questions.
They put about eighty, but they're all hidden because it's such a big, it's such a big area, they're all, a lot of them in the back, so.
Yeah.
Well, what's the concern with wetlands back there? Because I know there's a lot of wetlands area there, especially that borders, um, the seventy-two.
Back towards the, I guess the brook and the train tracks are back there.
Yeah.
I think that was touched upon on that site plan approval by P and Z in twenty twenty.
Speaking to the mic. The record, my name is William Jackson, and then Mr. High, I assisted Mr. Hayek in uh, gaining a wetlands permit in two thousand nineteen. So the wetlands are flagged, the floodway is flagged, and the uh. The area, the sensitive areas are, have been set up.
And are these tractor trailers still on the property? No, they're gone?
That's, I can attest that all that's clear is pretty much just storage vehicles. I've heard that it was pretty bad condition, first part.
And so what, is just the two existing buildings you're keeping? There's three, oh, okay, can't, I can see two.
Uh, Mr. Hayek, uh, roofs and buildings in the eastern part of the property.
Yeah, I'm from, familiar with those buildings, I've been inside of them.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm familiar with those buildings, I've been inside of them.
Oh, okay.
When, uh, Donald Carlson was alive, uh.
What was the property prior?
He had a lot of, uh, antique vehicles.
Oh.
You know, uh. He had some, uh. Some, uh, SS staff cars, Mercedes.
Okay.
Nineteen twenties or thirties or, yeah, he had a. A lot of, a lot of antique vehicles, vehicles in there. Big bucks.
He actually had the license.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what happened to him. Uh, irrelevant, anyway, but.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Anybody have any questions? Oh, good, thanks, Council. Ryan, any questions on your end?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Public, any public comments in favor of the application? Public comments and opposition? Staff comments?
We have come.
So, uh, I guess the, this kind of goes back to, we were just talking before we even started. So with. The shop on Farmington Ave, that's. Three times more than they're supposed to have. If we look at the, you know, just the Google map of that spot on New Britain Road, they're supposed to have four spots. I count sixteen cars.
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously, I, you know, just. That, that property is set in the back there, it's literally on the edge of Berlin going right to the highway. Um, I, I. For me, it's like looking at, okay, go back to two eighteen, someone else comes in there, are they gonna put thirty cars again? And are we gonna have a duplicate of what we have on Farmington Avenue, where there's cars going right to the edge of the road? Because it's such a small area.
This one I can at least speak to. I know this photo was taken by Google in May twenty nineteen, right up here on the screen. This is before the hearing where they got the other lot across the street. They since then had cleared this up.
Okay.
So that's, for that, at least this one had been cleared up, but this is why I went there, because they had enforcement order in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And, uh, Marine gave them an order, and they came here to try to clear up that. We're trying to expand this lot, and then they figured it was easier to buy a separate lot.
Okay.
Well, this one at least, it has been different, this is an old picture, I can say that. But with the new occupant, how do we keep them to the same terms? They'll have to come here and. They'll have to come here because there were terms for that property for a.
And we'll have to approve a new applicant.
Right.
License over there.
Let's also just, you know, having that foresight of knowing, okay, how do we clean it up after the fact?
Yeah, because there were some, there were actually some conditions that they hadn't met yet, that was Mr. Hayek, actually, and the time was to. We're supposed to add some fencing here, or that, there's denture property in the back and some plantings as well. They were gonna strike area, that hadn't been done since.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to close the. Open part of that meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous, okay. Application C. It's our third application, ZBA twenty twenty four dash oh seven, three oh six Main Street, map nine one, block forty nine, lot six. Michael Nixer is requesting a determination to allow a change of nonconforming use. To a single family at three oh six Main Street for Berlin zoning regulation four C three E, in a CCD two zone. Speaking for the application.
I've lived at three oh six Main Street since ninety-three, when my grandfather passed away, he's owned the house since nineteen.
Doesn't capture a wide angle, you have to.
I'm sorry, how about now, we better?
Oh, you're good.
Okay, so anyway. The house has been in my family since nineteen forty-four, when my grandfather purchased it, father grew up there. I grew up there, basically, throughout the summers, and I moved in when he passed away in ninety-three, I've been there since. Fast forward to ninety-nine, my second son was born, I needed another bedroom. Took the upstairs kitchen out, made three bedrooms upstairs, now I have one kitchen. And I'm never gonna go back to a two family. So, I need a change to a single family, and I'd like to get, um. A home equity line of credit, and there, the bank assessor came out, and he assessed it as a single family because there is only one kitchen. So we need it to be changed to a single family. And I understand the ramifications of doing that, I will never be able to go back to a two family, which I don't ever plan on doing. Because my twenty-five-year-old son told me, if I ever leave, he'll move in. So that's the gist of the situation.
Sounds easy.
Aye.
Pretty much.
Because, because the town says I have a two family, the bank says I have one family, so there's a discrepancy there. So they declined my application for a home equity line of credit.
The tax office won't change it without ZBA approval.
I, I don't, to me, that's not an option, I've been doing business with the bank since I was sixteen, so.
Okay.
That's about all I have to. Tell you guys.
Well, thank you, that's good. Any questions? Yep, pretty straightforward.
Yep, that one's easy.
Motion to close, item number twenty twenty four dash oh seven.
Okay, we have a motion made to close, is, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Any comments in favor and opposition? Staff comments, none?
No comments.
Well, if not, anybody wants to get up and speak, you know, you're welcome to. If not, uh. Motion made, uh, the motion made and seconded, and, uh. All, uh, then any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's closed. Application ZBA twenty twenty four oh eight, eighty-seven Robbins Road, map fourteen dash two, block fifty-four, lot forty-three. Heather Bertrand Surface is requesting a variance of fence height. In the front yard setback for a six-foot high privacy fence around the northwesterly front yard along Lansdale Avenue. Where, when three feet of height is allowed in the R fifteen zone for Berlin zoning regulation, section four B seven. Speaking for the application. Yeah, please, uh, sign in, and your microphone's all yours.
So we would like to fence in our backyard. Um, the side of the backyard that is parallel to Lawndale. Um, is. Instead of having a three-foot high fence, we're asking to have a six-foot high fence. Yeah, reason being, um, we have our son who is autistic, and he's prone to eloping, wandering. Walking away, so we wanna do it for safety for him, three foot's not gonna hold him in. Um, so we wanna do six feet all the way around, and it's important to note. On that side, you can see that it's, it is wooded already, we're not. We may have to clean it up a little bit just to get the fence in, but it's literally going in the woods, and where it would be is it's. About halfway down the hill, it is a hill. So the six-foot fence. The top of the fence is about street height. So you're not, it's not gonna appear higher than three feet, it probably will appear lower than three feet, actually, so. It's not gonna hinder in any way, cars driving by, being able to see, or my neighbor in the back pulling out of its driveway. Um. Just to keep our guy safe.
What kind of fence are you planning to put up?
Yeah. Yeah, the dog yard wood fence, the rounded tops. Wood panels.
And so Lawnsdale is the question mark here for the six to three.
Yeah, even, um, how far did you want in Robbins Road? I think there was a portion of it, right?
Yeah.
Because the setback there is.
Ten feet on there.
Because, yeah, where the property is located, there's.
Right, so we were going to do the fence, we're applying for twelve feet off the street.
Think I had a.
Yeah, so it would start behind the garage, and, and yep, and go all the way back, um, and my back paper has a, a wall, but it's. It's going right in the middle of the woods on that hill. Yes.
Inside the tree line?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not taking, you're not removing the actual buffer then?
Not at all.
It's about three hundred feet of fence, huh? Oh, okay.
But, you know, it's important for, again, our son's safety, we, it's something that we really need to do. The big guy, and he's only gonna get bigger, so.
Do we have an old plot plan on the screen? See that thirty-five step back? Pretty, it pretty much meets where the property meets on that side yard.
And you already buffer on Lawnsdale, so, you know, should be okay.
Please, the questions, the definition of yard.
Yeah.
Bigger than, um, than a kid in their.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's been a minute.
Yard definition makes me wanna, on my edible, so, um.
We've had somebody come in, speaking on maybe changing it to make it make sense for everyone. Wording there somewhere, I'm not sure if we can come up with it, but.
Besides, I'm warning too rich that, uh, for our internal.
Oh, yeah.
And then the buried backyard is considered part of your deed.
At least in these instances, it seems like there's. There's some, you know, nudge for a variance.
Yeah. I don't have any questions, though.
No further questions.
Further question? Thank you. Any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition? Staff comments?
No more staff comments.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application.
Second.
A motion made and seconded.
They're so fast.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, application E, ZBA twenty twenty four dash nineteen. That dash oh nine, one hundred Harding Street, map nine dash one, block twenty-eight, lot twenty-seven. April D Mercurio is requesting a use variance of Berlin zoning regulation eleven, seven B, for a hair salon for Berlin zoning regulation. Fifteen A four, the property is owned by one hundred Harding Holdings, in a GI general industrial zone. Speaking for the application.
Hey, there's the deal, can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay, so I've been at, uh, one oh two A hard, uh, Langdon Court for thirteen and a half years. And the problem I'm having is, prior to the guy that's here now, they're just there to do car washing. But they're also there spraying painting cars, playing havoc with my health, I've been on steroids for a whole week, just last week. Because of it. Um, spraying air freshener through my ear ducts, because we sit, we share the same heating duct area. He has the heating in the back where he is, and just spraying stuff through, so it's not good for me. So Nero, we're like family, he invited me to one hundred Harding to take a spot there. Um, so that I can get away from all of this, because this one's also selling cars too in there. Um, people knocking on my door asking me. What I'm selling, I'm not selling nothing, but haircuts, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm just looking to go across the street. And, uh, make it safe for everybody, let's just put it that way, my clients, because I have elderly clients. And, uh, I mean, some are young, some are old, let me let you know, they're also smoking weed over there too, and. These elderly people aren't liking it too much, they do not want any part of this, so I'm losing a little bit of business, but if I go to the other side, I may convince them to come back. Because of the problem, so, my hands are tied, and I just hope that you find it to be a satisfactory solution to go across the street. I've been in business a total of twenty-seven years myself, I'm a single mother, and I have to support my daughter myself. And, uh, with that being said, yeah, I'm just hoping we can find a solution here.
What is one hundred Harding currently?
Uh, an industrial building, commercial building, and I believe it was November of last year, September, we had someone coming for use variance. That softball training.
Yes.
Yeah, so that.
Yeah.
Pretty much the last activity.
In the back, in the back.
Yeah, somewhere like, so, I think right around here with the stores, around the center, but it goes towards the back.
Okay, right to the front of that, over here to the left, is all like office building, uh, spaces now, where. Right to the front of that, over here to the left is all like office building, uh, spaces now where he's gonna be renting them out to people. Yeah.
So it's basically still general industrial, but.
Yeah, there's some commercial offices, simple, I think Nero had their landscaping or.
But I mean, if commercial goes out, you can still put general industrial in there.
Yeah, you can still put.
So it's not a.
We have a. There, right?
Yeah, I have some pictures of the office, she's placed space she gave.
We're looking at.
There's also a sheet metal manufacturer at the corner still in there, so there's not completely. They can't. Uh, here's a picture of her space.
What address are you at currently?
One oh two A, right across the street.
Is it, can we see that in this Google view?
Oh, yeah, go back.
Had it up a minute.
I'll, I'll keep it there.
Right where that is, it's right across the street to the right.
Yeah, I was.
Harding, right over to that.
I was the, I was there this afternoon, so.
Right behind.
Right here.
Yes.
Behind a certain chairperson.
So it's the spotless auto detailing that is the problem?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Right next to there, they pull their works.
That's correct, I'm right over there. But see, and then also we have havoc going on when the, um, when the gutters get, um, when it storms. The gutters get clogged somehow and the water comes right up to the middle of that parking lot. I have clients leaving that have to roll up their pants and take their shoes off just to leave the property. This has happened several times also. I have water running into that building, which I don't know why. But I've dealt with it for thirteen and a half years because, yeah. It's not an expensive place for me to be. Like I say, I'm a single mother, so I gotta do what I can do and that's it. And like I say, I've been in business a total of.
You give me going across the street?
Yes, right across the street, right behind, yep.
Okay.
Directly behind. Like I say, there's like office spaces in there. Um, one.
Looks like an upgrade.
Or maybe five, five or six.
Yeah.
Here, I'll put a picture off of this place here.
You're lucky you're not at where the Twisted Sister and Subway is, that, that parking lot gets flooded every time it rains, like, like swimming flooded.
And I happen to know that guy Frank D. Domenico that rents a spot out.
Yeah.
Actually invited me down there, but no, it's too much, like you say.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
I used to work for his brother Gino that passed away years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven years ago now already. God bless him, yeah.
Yeah.
Connie's on.
Got a question we have?
Um. What, you know, the concern I have is not that, but you said they're selling cars next door?
Yeah, we denied. We denied that application.
Oh, so, yeah, so there's history with that one?
Just mentioning it because people are coming meet to me to sell them cars and I'm like, I have nothing to do with that, go next door. You know? They're doing a lot that they shouldn't be doing and it's, you know, Nero's hands are tied because they're like family to us. They've been nothing but great to us, you know, I do their hair and they rent to me and that's why they're giving me the spot over there. They kind of feel sorry for me.
Oh, they own both buildings?
Yeah, so the problem is, is you got this one doing this and he's not listening to the protocol that they're, they're supposed to be doing. It's like a bunch of animals. I can't, I don't know what to say. I don't want to keep going on because it's just annoying. It's just better for me to move on. And, you know, even if it's just across the street, it still keeps me here in Berlin, you know?
Yep.
Uh, we, personal service, we tell, yeah.
So if, when you do, when, if you do that for one unit?
Doesn't have to be.
It's not changing it, changing it for like the whole.
No, it doesn't have to be, no. Just that one, I mean, it's just that one. It's, it's a, well, that, that's why it's a, it's an appeal for one particular case.
These are the only zones that allow you.
So it, it's.
Usually it's for, they can't find a tenant or other uses to come in and there's been plenty of problems with this property in the past, I think, with.
They just bought.
Well, it was all general industrial, it was to be Gosson Delu, big company, uh, used to make machines, you know? And they folded up. Pretty much closed up shop, so. There's not much general industrial space left in it.
No, yeah.
How? Okay.
There's Chris, Chris, Chris wants to, he wants to talk.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to add if I could, I mean, just, do you mind if I do, sorry?
Go, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. No, th- this space is essentially office space in an industrial complex. It's basically worthless space. Um, it's almost unrentable. So to have her move across the street is helpful to her. Um, and I think it's a good use there. Will help hopefully the tenant next door to move, but also for April to be in a healthier situation for herself and her clients, keep a Berlin business here in town. Um, and the good news is it's not taking vital in- industrial space, so it's really taking office, which has minimal usefulness and it, to me, seems like it's a good fit in a lot of ways.
I agree with you. The only thing I'm worried about is the fact that when she moves out, there's gonna be ten more cars in that lot.
I believe they may have an application in front of P and Z, but I could be mistaken.
Pardon me? Pardon?
They currently submitted an application to P and Z to do auto repair there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. And because they've been taken out of our purview by state statute, location approvals.
Ah.
I believe in, it wasn't too long ago, maybe two years ago, they went before this board.
Yeah.
But I think they just didn't have more than four members. I think two people said yes, and then the other two. Someone said they weren't sure, they wanted more information, and the other one just said no. He never asked for comeback for continuance or anything, so.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions? For, uh?
Uh, staff comments notes that parking is subject to staff analysis. Will you speak to that, Paulie?
Yeah, so just, just the same way we did with the baseball training facility, just making sure they have adequate space and with the small office space there, they certainly have it, we just have to look back at that form that was submitted to make sure they have the two or three spaces they need.
So it's go, so basically it's going to be at the end there where the office area of the complexes, that's where the salon is gonna be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shouldn't take away any spaces that they already have, a lot of, they really have well more than they need.
Well, Nero just bought another building on Kelsey Street, so they're all moving there, so it's opening a lot of parking over here and, yeah. They haven't rented the office space out yet that I know of. So like I said, there's one lawn room there, one, two, three, four, and mine, that I know.
Okay.
We can make the stipulation in our approval anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition? Staff comments?
No comments.
Motion to close twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next application, Yuluan Chen, LC Sushi LLC is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages approval for Berlin zoning regulation eleven B for an on-premise beer and wine with patio liquor permit for LC Sushi LLC. The property is owned by two twenty-four Berlin Turnpike LLC in his own BTD PSB. I don't know what that means. PSB.
That might be planned shopping district?
Uh, let's see, I have my book right in front of me. No, I don't see it.
BTD is Berlin Turnpike, I know that.
Yeah, that's Berlin Turnpike.
Brought it for a long time.
No. Chris is gone, he's not.
Yes, plan, yes, planned shopping A and planned shopping B.
Planned shopping B?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I am still here. It's the Berlin Turnpike development overlay, which allows the owner, Mr. Orsini, to do the commercial in the front, residential in the back. That's what the BTD is.
Yeah, PSB is planned shopping B.
I think he might be speaking to the next one.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, possibly, yeah.
No, 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 you, you're asking about the BTD. The BTD is the overlay, but yes.
It's an overlay zone.
It's an overlay zone, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, my name is attorney Joseph O'Brien. I represent the applicant, which is LC Sushi LLC. This is Yuluan Chen. He's one of the two owners of LC Sushi LLC. Uh, they're opening a, um, restaurant called Fancy Sushi, uh, at two twenty-four Berlin Turnpike, unit number one. I guess is a subsection of two fifty Berlin Turnpike. There's always been a lot of address confusion over this, uh, particular location because it's also two twenty. We're in the same, uh, location, uh, as the former Burger Boss, which, uh, was seeking and obtained exactly what we're seeking, which is a beer and wine on-premises permit, uh, to sell beer and wine. And Burger Boss have, uh, obtained the exact same permit in twenty twenty. They went out of business, I believe, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we are going to have, um, uh, a restaurant, uh, with about forty-seven seats inside and maybe another five or six tables on the patio i- in season, of course. Uh, our hours are gonna be eleven AM, nine PM, uh, but ten PM on, on Friday and Saturday. So it's, uh, primarily a, uh, sushi and Asian food restaurant, but it's also, they also want to be able to serve beer and wine to patrons and we think it's a good use, uh.
Yeah. Saki, yes.
Yes, but we think it's a, a good use identical to the one previously there, uh, with Burger Boss. There's no live entertainment.
Yeah, normally we see the application alongside of this, just to verify that you haven't requested that.
No, we have not. We have no intention.
Yeah, so some reason the state changed all their forms this year. And they emailed some people some forms and gave the others old forms, so you'll see the difference there. And the one here should be right after. Towards the end, it just looks like it's not a form, but it, it starts with one eleven.
Oh, but it hasn't been completed.
Yeah, so this is the section that they'll have us fill out and submit everything, because it's pretty much it's all online now.
Okay.
We, we filed the application with the liquor control, but the efficiency, as they say, is we don't have our town approval. Uh, and we, of course, have to come to zoning board of appeals to obtain that, so once we, once we obtain the documentation, we'll submit it online to liquor control and we've asked for a temporary permit, uh, which would then allow us to begin serving beer and wine once the restaurant's open. Which should be within the next thirty days. We hope that's the theme that we. Yeah.
Yeah, the next one over, the whole next complex. I've been, I've been to this, this.
Oh, yeah, the accurate.
Yeah, it's the, it's, it's the, it's, it's the Orsini complex.
And stuff. Fresh monkey, yeah, yeah.
Fresh monkey.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the John Orsini complex because they're, they're finishing building the apartments in the back now.
Mm-hmm.
Orsini, yeah.
Yeah, 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 because he owns, he owns all the executive.
He's always chewing gum. Uh, excuse me. He is. But he's a good guy.
Oh, great guy, he's, he's.
Good guy.
His dealerships are top-notch.
Okay.
So you guys said you're, you're planning on opening in, in about a month?
Yeah, about, we were hoping to open at the beginning of June, but there's been a little bit of delays here and there, uh, so probably within.
And this is the old Boss Burger spot?
Same spot.
Okay.
Same place, yep. Including the patio.
Okay.
And, and, and Christine mentioned it, so where does Saki fall in beer and wine?
It's wine.
It's, oh, it's wine?
Oh, yeah.
Learned something new every day.
Okay, any more questions?
No further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, there was a, some, uh, seating on there, was, was there, I
So?
The seating.
Oh, the seating, yeah, there should be.
Yeah.
Submitted to the health department, thus as well.
Just that, just a quick review of that.
Hmm.
Was there a, um?
It said forty-seven.
Okay, you got a letter from John Orsini too as well. All right, okay. Is there, is there, uh, a location where it tells you how many seats?
Yeah. On that fourth.
Fourth page.
Yeah, it shows. Right, the, the A one O. It shows sixty-nine seats dining. Look at the bottom.
Okay, I, I see it.
That's someplace you open the chamber. And to go back. Or you suck it up and, you know, fly and, and hook it back.
Who's that?
Chris, you gotta.
That was Chris again. Any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition? Staff comments?
No comments.
None.
Pretty much identical application in Burger Boss.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application. A motion made and seconded, discussion?
I think Chris wanted to say something, Tony.
Oh.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I've been working with Mr. Chen for a while, very excited about his use in that space. Uh, we do not have his type of restaurant in town right now. He also owns another restaurant, so this is something he's done before. Very excited to have them in town and, uh, hope you'll be supported. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. We have a motion made?
Yeah, uh, uh, second.
Second, is all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Last application is, uh, ZBA twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Eighteen sixty-one Berlin Turnpike, map twenty-two dash one, block one forty, lot eleven. David Miller, the Encore Bar and Grill LLC is requesting the addition of live bands to their previously existing liquor license. Speaking for the application.
Valerie Capaldo. One of the owners. Uh, when we came through zoning the first time, uh, we requested, um, uh, disc jockeys and, um, acoustic. We didn't check live bands. Um, we hadn't intended on having duos and trios and small things like that. What we didn't realize was if a duo or even a, a single guy plugs in, no, a, if they plug in their, uh, keyboard, a small keyboard, that's considered an amplified band. So we canceled all of our performers and we're just having disc jockeys right now and acoustics. And we're requesting that we can have live bands so that we can have both plug in a small or any kind of band at this point because we, I didn't realize the first time I would have done it the first time around. But to put us on a level playing field with, with other venues. Um, everyone else has live entertainment these days. People are not looking to go out to dinner, leave, go to a separate place, have a couple of drinks and hear some music on a one-stop shop. Particularly older clientele, which is what we're really geared towards. Our average age customers probably between fifty and sixty years old. So they're looking to go out to dinner, hear some music and go home by ten, eleven o'clock at night.
So when you guys did the Timmy Maya band the first time, what was the timeframe of that? Did you guys have to move tables? I, I know his band, I know what he charges. I mean, he's not playing in a little corner.
He was. He had himself with a microphone and someone with a keyboard and a drummer. So it was a trio. Timmy Maya can come single with a trio or with his full band.
Okay. Did you guys have to move tables? I mean, what?
No. In the, in, uh, one of the rooms, um, when it was Barrel and Vine, they had all tables and chairs in the back room with the fireplaces. We have it set up more like a lounge. There is a table and chairs. There's a couple of, um, couches with coffee tables. We serve appetizers and cocktails in that room. As well as full meals if people, if that's where they'd like to sit. But there is room by the fireplace for the trio without having to move tables and chairs.
What are your hours?
We open at three o'clock and, um, we close at eleven, but during the week, uh, Monday through Wednesday, we're closing at nine. It's just too quiet. It's really an older crowd. It's, it's.
So Friday and Saturday, you guys are, uh, closing shop at eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock, yeah.
So band is doing last call at ten forty-five?
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we, when you have. Yeah, so we, yeah, so we, when you have DJs, given sometimes ten thirty, really depends on the crowd.
Okay, no further questions. Does anybody have any question? Right? No, thanks. Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, well, I wanted to see if there was any, was any uh, comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition? Any additional staff comments?
Comments, I was gonna ask the same question about the hours.
Oh, the hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on the application. A motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next part should be pretty easy. This is a. Old business. We're just gonna vote on the applications that we all have heard, just within the last hour or so. Uh, ZBA twenty twenty four oh four. Twenty twenty four oh five, nine seventy nine Deming Road, map five dash two, block one twenty two, lot six. Eric Peterson, Cold Spring Brook Farm is requesting variances for one, a front yard setback of five point nine feet. For the expansion of non-conforming greenhouse structure and two, a side yard setback of seven point eight feet for the expansion of a non-conforming greenhouse structure. With a front yard setback of thirty five point five feet and a side yard setback of twenty five feet is allowed per Berlin zoning regulation. Eleven C two in an OT zone. Have a motion to approve this application?
It's, uh, Ryan, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
We have a motion to approve the application. You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is approved. Little bit of a concern there, but that's, uh, we're just continuing something that probably shouldn't, I know, well, yeah. But it's, we're continuing, we're continuing not conforming. We're, it's already built, it's, it's like. Yeah, and the concerning part to me though is how that parking is on Deming slash New Britain Avenue. Even last night when I was coming back from my parents, the people, especially older folks, not saying, but just. They're driving there because they're, they're driving to go buy a, a plant or whatever the case may be, and they realize all of a sudden it's on them. And they're turning in and that parking lot really isn't set up for people coming in. You know, more than five miles an hour, because it is, everything is so close, especially with that setback, with that concrete, you know. Uh, top.
Yeah.
That's why I asked if it was, you know, something of an entrance and there's three entry exit points there and. That's the thing that concerns me is that, that's. You know, I, I, I don't want to say a bad thing, but like, that's just. It's an issue. There's gonna be, if, if they haven't, God bless them, but like. You know, that just seems like accidents, not just singular either, waiting to happen, how everything is just. That's, you're, you're right on top of Deming slash New Britain Road. We approve a lot of applications and, you know, we don't, there's just a small number of applications we don't approve. Uh, we try to do as much as we can to try to support everybody, but this thing was built ahead of time. If it wasn't built ahead of time, I wonder if this would be approved. Uh, just a, just a comment that, you know, for the, for the record.
Saying is true, it's only a matter of inches, literally, a foot.
Yeah.
Stop like, you know what I mean? It was clearly, look at the older pictures online, you know, it clearly.
Been that way. Approval I saw at P and Z was ninety two, I think.
Yeah.
Might have been existing before then.
Yeah, that, that greenhouse has been protruding out of that property for the longest time. It shouldn't be protruding anymore, but at this point. Add another foot, that's like.
We do send notice, it's, it's pretty much a budding Rocky Hills, so we sent them a notice as well if they had any concerns with traffic. Well, you know, it's something, but give us any report, no.
Okay, alright. Uh, well, anyway, that's, that's approved. The ZBA twenty twenty four dash oh seven, three oh six Main Street. Map nine dash one block forty nine lot six, Michael Nixer is requesting a determination to allow change in non-conforming use.
We skipped, skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I did that on purpose. CBA twenty twenty four dash oh six, New Britain, one forty seven New Britain Road, map three dash three block twenty eight lot five. Paris Aic USA Auto Sales LLC is requesting a determination to allow a change of a non-conforming use to allow a used car dealer license at one forty seven New Britain Road. Per Berlin zoning regulation four C three in a CCD zone. I'll make a motion to approve it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, it's all unanimous. Uh, C, ZBA two, twenty twenty four dash oh seven, three oh six Main Street, map nine dash one block forty nine lot six. Michael Nixer is requesting a determination to allow a change of a non-conforming use to a single family at three oh six Main Street per Berlin zoning regulation. Four C three in a CCD two zone. I read that because it was the easy one. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. ZBA twenty twenty four dash oh eight, eighty seven Robbins Road, map fourteen dash two block fifty four lot forty three. Heather Bertrand Surface is requesting a variance of fence height in the front yard setback for a six foot high privacy fence. Around the northwest silly front yard along Lansdale Avenue, when three foot of height is allowed in the R fifteen zone per Berlin zoning regulation four B seven. Have a motion to approve this application?
Motion to approve the application.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Ryan, aye, sorry.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, ZBA twenty twenty four dash oh nine, one hundred Harding Street, map nine dash one block twenty eight. Lot twenty seven, April D Mercurio is requesting a use variance of Berlin zoning regulation seven B for a hair salon. Per Berlin zoning regulation fifteen A four, property is owned by one hundred Harding Holdings and a GI zone. Make a motion to approve this application.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Appreciate the extra information from Ms. Mercurio as well.
And related to Christine Mercurio, I went to high school with her. Christine Mercurio.
That's my, my ex-husband's name, Mercurio.
Oh, okay. ZBA twenty twenty four dash ten, two fifty Berlin Turnpike map, four dash four block eighty two lot eighteen. Uh, eighteen, Yu, Yu Luan Chen, LLC sushi. LC sushi is, LLC is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages approval per Berlin zoning regulation eleven B for an on premise beer and wine. With patio liquor permit for LC sushi LLC, the property is owned by two twenty four Berlin Turnpike LLC in his own BTD PSB. Have a motion to approve this application. Okay.
A second.
A motion made and seconded? Any discussion?
Customer on June third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You make dragon rolls. Okay. You're on a dragon roll right now? No, I don't know. I just, I just came out of my head because I bought a pair of glasses and they, the style, the name of the company was Dragon. But I also bought dragon rolls when I buy sushi sometimes. I don't know, spicy rolls or whatever. Anyway. ZBA twenty twenty four dash eleven, eighteen sixty one Berlin Turnpike, map twenty two one block one forty lot eleven. David Miller, the Encore Bar and Grill LLC is requesting the addition of live bands to their previously existing liquor license. I'll make a motion to approve that as well. The hours seem to be reasonable, eleven o'clock, you know, it's not gonna be a. An issue with anybody in the neighborhood or air area, in the immediate area, so uh, I, I, I think that's a good thing. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Are we putting those, are we, sorry, hold on, are we putting those hours in the approval or is that just commentary?
Uh, the hours are, uh, are, I think Paul has the hours in the application.
No, they weren't a part of the application.
They weren't?
Took note during the meeting. You can put them in the approval.
Well, I, you know, why don't we put them in the approval, just to make sure that, uh, we know, we don't go up to two o'clock in the morning and wind up with problems in our hands. That, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, but if we can put it in the application or the approval.
Okay.
Yeah, eleven o'clock or whatever, you know.
Uh, I would recommend giving some buffer on that, probably midnight.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's probably a smart thing to do, just in case. That would be, that would be good to do. Well, you just don't want to have a, you know, turn into a bucket of blood type of thing, so. Anyway, um.
So revised motion to approve, uh, the application with the end stipulation of midnight? For hours?
For Friday and Saturday. Friday and Saturday. Cause that's what they talked about was just the Friday and Saturday hours being extended.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, midnight?
So Thursday, Friday, Saturday. To midnight.
Okay, motion to approve application.
Yeah, but Thursday, but Thursdays, so bars can be open on Friday and Saturdays till two, on Thursdays till one. Shouldn't there be a buffer to appropriate that timing?
You can make a motion for it. There's a motion right now.
But just because, you know, i- if you go to a bar in Hartford, for instance, on a Thursday night, bars have to shut down at one o'clock. On a, on a Friday and Saturday, it's two o'clock. I don't, you know, obviously if. We, we should have some type of consistency there. To kind of match, uh, you know, what liquor consumption constitutes. Well, you know. End time period. Think the concern is probably that, uh, it, you know, it's not a residential area. Heart, you know, if you're downtown Hartford. You're in a commercial area. Right. This is a commercial area, but this is all residents around it too. Right. That's concerned to, to be respectful of the residences, maybe, you know, twelve o'clock, I mean, if that's good. Uh, if that works out for everybody, this, then, you know, it might be, might be the best thing to do. You know, I mean, only because I think there's residences behind. Yeah. You know. And, uh. Are you guys, oh, we can't ask questions at this point? No, I can't. Oh, that's right. But, uh.
Me can either.
For Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
What other restaurants do here?
That makes like the Russian lady at two o'clock in the morning playing the Russian overtures, whatever, it's, you know. Yeah.
Okay, but. So I think we, we have approved the motion to accept the application. Should we rescind the approval and remotion?
Decision of the hours, right?
Motion to, just an addendum to the application. An addendum to the application, just showing the hours to twelve o'clock midnight.
That's for.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yeah. Yeah.
We want to set times on the other days or? What, what they say, nine or?
I think, no, I don't think, I don't think you need to do that.
Okay.
No, I mean, like I said, i- if it was like downtown Hartford, I mean, I, I can see two o'clock in the morning, it's whatever. That was eighteen twelve overture, by the way, Tchaikovsky. Anyway, um, that's good, if you want to do that.
Okay.
Addendum, that's fine. That's it, we're, we're done. The only thing we have is approval of minutes, uh. I guess February minutes.
Oh, fairly short.
We don't have anybody here to approve February minutes.
Two out of the four.
Oh, two, yeah.
Just two out of the four.
Gotta be a majority.
Majority, no.
No, we'll just put that, postpone that to June.
Yeah, the same thing happened last, last month with that one.
I approve.
Postpone that to June, to the June. We have a June meeting, right?
Approve April.
Yes. We can approve April?
If you all were here. The majority were here. One absent, Mateo.
Yeah, you want to approve the April minutes?
Motion to approve the April twenty third, twenty twenty four minutes.
Just second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
abstain.
Okay, I got him here, okay, it's alright. I think that's it.
Yeah, there's just some old legislation that happened, and then I'll tell you guys.
Oh, our next meeting is in June. Yeah, June.
One second. Twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth. Seven PM, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, we might, might be a change of room that day, I have to check. Oh, yeah, it works, yeah. I mean, it just sucks for us because the space is limited everywhere. As long as we don't have seven more applications.
Yeah.
That actually went faster than I expected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually I would say, I have to open.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Beat you, aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Good, fast work.